Milford Board of Selectmen meeting for February 11, 2019. Tonight, we have a couple of very special citations to give away. If you give me a few minutes, I'd like to read a couple of letters first. This is from the Police Chief, Thomas J. O'Laughlin. "On Wednesday, February 6, 2019, at 10:50 PM, Dispatcher Jason Cavino, on his way home after completing his tour of duty at the Milford Police Headquarters, when he observed a fire at the apartment residence located at 16 North Bow Street. Dispatcher Jason Cavino contacted the Milford Public Safety Dispatch Center and advised them of the fire. Then, without regard for his own personal safety, Dispatcher Cavino entered the residence to alert the occupants so that he could safely be evacuated. While Dispatcher Cavino was banging on apartment doors, Officer Elizas Giokis and Officer Jonathan Branch, without regard for their personal safety, entered the residence to assist in alerting residents to evacuate. When they did not receive a response from any of the apartments, Officer Giokis gained entrance by forcibly kicking or shouldering the door so they could ensure that everyone had vacated safely. The efforts of Dispatcher Jason Cavino, Officer Elizas Giokis, and Officer Jonathan Branch resulted in the safe evacuation of nine residents. When the officers were informed that there was a resident unaccounted for who lived in the apartment that was showing the greatest amount of fire, they notified the Fire Department of this information, and members of the Milford Fire Department were able to rescue and resuscitate the woman. She was transported to Milford Regional Medical Center, and then was transferred to Massachusetts General Hospital. The selfless actions of Dispatcher Jason Cavino, Officer Eliza Giokis, and Officer Jonathan Branch in reporting the fire, safely evacuating nine residents, and directing the firefighters to save a 10th resident are worthy of recognition and praise. Sincerely yours, Thomas J. O'Laughlin." And the next letter I have is from our Fire Chief. "Shortly before 11:00 PM on Wednesday, February 6, 2019, the Fire Department responded to 16 North Bow Street for a reported structure fire. Upon arrival, firefighters encountered a heavy volume of fire venting from the second-floor window. Police officers on scene indicated that most residents had been alerted to the fire and removed from the building, but a resident of an apartment on fire was missing. Firefighter David Cavino pulled the hose line and darkened down the fire room from the exterior wall, while firefighters Jacob Gronmeyer and Douglas Lima, assigned to Rescue One, under the direction of Lieutenant William Collins, advanced the hose line in the front door, up the stairs, and into the fire of the apartment. There, they encountered zero visibility, significant heat, and room heavily involved in fire. Firefighters David Cavino and Daniel Martino then advanced a second hose line up the stairs to back up the first. Firefighter Gronmeyer and Lima knocked down a bulk of the fire and transitioned into search mode while the second hose line took up the fire suppression. Gronmeyer and Lima quickly found the occupant on the kitchen floor and began extragating her from the building. Lieutenant Collins alerted the ambulance on the scene to prepare to receive the victim. Once outside, the victim was transported by community ambulance to the Milford Regional Medical Center with the assistance of two of the Milford firefighters. The actions of the above-named firefighters merit recognition. Operating under difficult conditions, they exemplified the highest traditions of fire service. Their dedication to their profession, along with training and teamwork, has hopefully provided the victim with a chance to fully recover." I took these letters over the weekend, and I pulled a couple of words out of them, and I took a dictionary out. So I saw the word hero. A person of great strength and courage, a person regarded as a role model in your community. Heroic, willing to take daring risks and risky measures. Sacrifice, an offering of the life of a person. Selflessness, without regard for oneself, or one's own interest, or one's own safety. And so tonight, I know I speak for myself when I speak for the Board of Selectmen, and we have some citations from the Senator, from the representative, but as the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen in the town of Milford, I tell all of you that I could not be more proud of all of you for what you do on a daily basis for this community, and thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I think the letters speak for themselves. And, you know, I think in this case, it's a rare case where we have folks that are trained every day to go into buildings. We have a dispatcher in this case who's not uniquely trained to do some of the things he did, and it was truly selfish, selflessness, that, you know, he was a community member at that point, not necessarily a dispatcher, and I wanted to uniquely call out Jason Cavino, not over and above the others, but, you know, trained to deal with difficult situations as a dispatcher. God knows the things that the dispatchers deal with on a day-to-day basis. But, you know, I can say, I hope that the victim does well. I know everybody here does, that's why you go into buildings, that's why you do these things. But it sure seems likely, I don't want to pretend to understand the whole situation, but it sure seems likely that person would have likely not made it. And for everybody's house that you guys go into, for every incident like this, there's a family, there's a child, there's a grandchild, there's a parent, there's a mother, there's an extended family who's thankful for what you do as well. And, you know, I'm glad that we had the opportunity to pull you guys together and to talk about this incident, and we should, you know, if anything, call you out more often, because what you do is just phenomenal, and we want to thank you for what you do, and thank you for the incident here. I know there's a woman that's very grateful that you were there at the right time and that those flames were observed and called in. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, obviously, I echo the comments of my colleagues. I'm not going to repeat anything they've said, but again, thank you for allowing us to recognize you. We appreciate the fact that, not only what you did, but also the career paths that you've chosen. A lot of us could never do what you do, and we know that, and that even makes you guys even that much more important to a lot of us. So, you're appreciated. I know probably it doesn't always feel that way, but you are, and you are heroes, and you're always running into places when the rest of us are trying to get out. So, from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate that, and I thank you and everything that you guys do on a daily basis. So, thank you, and thank you for being here in Milford.
Senator?
Yeah, thank you very much for your service, your heroism. You know, I'm reminded of scripture that says, "The greatest act of love that one can give is to lay down the life for their friend." And what I've been thinking about with that is, this wasn't a friend. This was someone, these were nine people, 10 people, you didn't even know. So if there's a greater act, it's that, to give down, lay down your life for someone you don't even know, to sacrifice, to put your life on the line for people who are innocent and victimized by fire or public safety threats, and that is just a wonderful thing. So, thank you for your service. And I do have citations, which I think after Representative Murray says a few words that we'll read off to you.
Go ahead, Representative.
I think one of the unique things that we have in our community, and I don't know that people necessarily appreciate it or realize it, is the degree of camaraderie and teamwork that we have between the different departments in our town. And you see it with the parks and the highway, you see it with the schools and central government, but most significantly, you see it with the police and the fire. And I think on this particular event here, we saw it the most. And I think the other thing that folks don't necessarily appreciate is that this kind of a success story doesn't just happen. So, the dispatcher, the police officers, the firefighters, they went in there, but they didn't go in alone. They went in with the top equipment that is out there, thanks to what the town of Milford and the residents and the taxpayers have provided you. And you also went in with the training and the discipline that the leadership of your departments has provided. Fire Chief Bill Tuohy, Milford Police Chief Tom O'Laughlin, spare no expense in terms of making sure that each and every one of you are prepared for just about anything you can face at any time, and this is where it pays off, and this is how it shows. And that's not true in every community. I'm biased, I think we're all a little biased, but I really think that we've got the best police department, the best fire department in the state here in Milford. And what happened last week was just remarkable. Just think about it, 10 people, just think about the tragedy that could be if Jay wasn't there, if the police officers didn't go, if the firemen didn't go in after that. 10 people, all of them saved. Remarkable work, remarkable work for the community, remarkable teamwork, remarkable leadership by both chiefs. You're a credit to the community, and I thank you very much for everything that you did.
You want to give your citations away?
Sure, yeah. Let me just start. Let me just read one. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so we both have citations, the Senator and myself, and what I'll do is I'll just read the language, because we have eight of them. And this one is from the House of Representatives. "Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offer its sincerest congratulations to the dispatcher, police office, and firefighters that we have before us tonight, in recognition of your swift, selfless, and brave actions in saving 10 residents from a life-threatening apartment house fire at 16 North Bow Street on February 6, 2019. The entire membership extends its very best wishes, expresses the hope for future good fortune, and continued success in all endeavors. It's given this 11th day of February, 2019. It's signed, Speaker of the House, Robert A. DeLeo, offered by Brian Murray, State Representative, and your admirer."
And the Massachusetts State Senate reads very similar, and it's to each individual involved in the heroism. "Be it hereby known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its congratulations to the dispatchers, the firefighters, and the police officers, in recognition of your selfless action and heroism in evacuating nine residents from a burning building and directing firefighters to a 10th resident. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested a copy transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate, signed by Karen Spilka, President, Michael Hurley, Clerk of the Senate, Ryan Fatman, your Senator, and also a big admirer. Congratulations."
(applause) What do I have to say? Okay. All right, folks. Jason?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. JJ, did they call you JJ anymore?
They did. Thank you, sir.
Milford Fire Lieutenant William Collins.
Thank you. Good work. David and Amy. This one. Daniel Martino. Jacob. Gronmeyer. Thanks for helping me on that.
I guess so. Before I read mine, when I first got elected to the Board of Selectmen, not a lot of people, not a lot of people, but some people said to me on the sidewalk of this community, "How safe do you feel in this community?" And if last week's event doesn't assure them that they're very, very safe in this community, there's something wrong. I can personally speak of the efforts that the Milford Police Department and the Fire Department have made in my life over the years, and I won't get into that this evening. But from a personal note, I can tell you how lucky, how privileged we are to live in this community and have representatives on our police force and our fire departments like you men and women. So, and I heard a great saying one day about fire and policemen. We, as the average human, are taught to run from fear and run from harm, and you're taught to run to harm and not have any fear. So, a lot of people need to understand that, that, you know, we see a scary situation, we're running, you're running into it. We're running away, you're running into it, and that's a very unique person. So I as well have citations. This is for Jason Cavino and the two police officers. Officer Jonathan Branch, and I hope I don't fool, Eliza Giokis. "Be it known that the Board of Selectmen hereby offer their congratulations for your swift, decisive, and heroic action during the February 6, 2019 fire, on which you entered the home, alerted the occupants, and assisted them to safety. On behalf of the people of Milford, the Selectmen extend their very best wishes and express the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all your endeavors. Given this, the 11th day of February, 2019." So that's for Jason and the two police officers. And now I have the firefighters. "Be it known that the Board of Selectmen hereby offer their congratulations, in recognition of your swift, decisive, and heroic actions, fighting the February 6, 2019 fire, entering the home, and rescuing a critically injured resident. On behalf of the people of Milford, the Selectmen extend their very best wishes and express the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this day, this 11th day of February, 2019, these citations are signed by Michael K. Walsh, Chairman, William D. Buckley, and William E. Kincaid, and the firefighters, I want to get your name on here, please, David Cavino, Jacob Gronmeyer, Douglas Lima, Lieutenant William Collins, and Daniel Martino." (applause) Thank you, my friend. Thank you for being at that traffic light. Saved 10 people.
Thank you, sir.
Representative Murray was telling me you guys are quite good at baseball and football players.
Tried, yeah. He was good at played off, too, but he stopped playing. Growing up. Good evening, we're back to a regular session. So our second ceremony tonight is to award a citation to the Milford youth 6th grade football team. Bless you, that were Super Bowl champs in Massachusetts, I take it? Or you?
We were Super Bowl champs for the Central Mass.
Central Mass.
And then we were also American Youth Football State Champions.
In our packet is your playoff results. I was looking at some of the scores. The Super Bowl, 21 to nothing?
Yes.
I mean, it's better than the Patriots. State semifinal, 24 to 6. State championship, 38 to 8. I mean, that is impressive. That's impressive.
The 38 to 8 victory was against a team that either did not get scored on or only had one score in two years put on them. They did not, they have not lost a game, so that's why that 38 to 8 mark is so impressive, that they did not give up a touchdown. In two years, they did not give up one touchdown. So, these boys practiced hard all year, wanted it, and so they went out and dominated a football field that day, through hard work.
So how many plan to go on and play Scarlet Hawk football at the high school? Ah, that's impressive.
Yes, it is.
That's impressive. It's what they call the feeder program.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, exactly. Well, before I give the citation away out, I'm going to ask my fellow board members if they have any comments.
No, I want to thank the coaches, I want to thank the parents for their guidance and leadership. Kids don't just evolve one day or pop out of the ozone and are great as a team or great as individuals without a lot of hard work. I hope you young men understand the sacrifice of the coaches and the sacrifice of your parents to get you here. It's a lot of hard work, just like the hard work you went through. You know, you didn't, you did a lot of practice, you did a lot of things to make sure that game day went well, and so the preparation that you put in is like anything else in life. It's what you put in is what you'll get out. So, nice job, and I congratulate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, first of all, Coach, thank you very much for doing what you do and for coming in, because, you know, so many things go on in our town, and, you know, we don't even always know who to recognize or what's going on with people with older children, younger children, you know, we try to pay attention to as much as we can. So, you know, we got some emails from a parent trying to put this together, Joe Calery, I want to throw that out to him, because he was on us to make sure we could, you know, make sure we could get a time that was good for all your folks and for us as well, which I wanted to acknowledge that. But again, this is a night where we get to just show people in town on a publicly televised meeting, never mind the audience members that are here, that all the good things that are happening in this town. And sometimes we get lost in some of the more less positive things, but you coming in and bringing these young men, who by the way are very polite, and I'm sure you wouldn't have it any other way, but this is a good group of young men, and you know what? This is what the future's all about. So, guys, you make me proud to be from Milford. I love this town. I was born here, raised here, I won't go anywhere else, and it's all about you guys now. You're the next generation, so listen to your parents, listen to your coach, keep doing the work you're doing, and obviously, keep playing football, because quite honestly, you're really good at it. So, have a great night, and thank you for allowing us to share this little piece of your victory with the town.
Thank you.
Selectman Kincaid said, "There are people sometimes," that I spoke earlier to the Fire and Police Departments, "that criticize the community, how safe do you feel in this community?" And there are people that criticize this community for what goes on. Spent nine years in the school committee, I used to say, "If you criticize the Milford Public Schools, you've never been in the Milford Public Schools." And I say the same thing about programs like this. You criticize this community because you don't know that there are great programs like this to go on all day long in this community, and young men and women that participate in them that make this community a great place to live. Being a father of a son that played three sports, I used to tell him all the time, "Do you think Coach is teaching you the game of football?" Well, maybe he is, but Coach is teaching you the game of life, and the game of life is some people are going to win, and some people are going to lose, and sometimes you're going to get knocked down. And I used to say to him all the time, "It's not how many times you get knocked down, it's how many times you get up, and don't ever forget that. You're going to have bad days, you're going to have them. Get up, get up, and keep going." So, again, we're very, very proud of you. Congratulations to a great season, and with that, I'm going to read your citation. Thank you.
Thank you. "Be it known that the Board of Selectmen hereby offer their congratulations to the Milford 6th grade football team, in recognition of your winning the 2017 State Championship. On behalf of the people of Milford, the Selectmen extend their very best wishes and express the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all your endeavors. Given this, 11th day of February, 2019. Signed, Michael K. Walsh, William D. Buckley, and William E. Kincaid, Jr. And I as well would also like to express my sincerest thanks, not only to the coaches, to the moms, to the parents that get you there to practice, get you there for games, and make sure you have everything you need." So again, congratulations on a great season. Coach?
Thank you, guys. What are we laughing at? You know what? We know where we get another one. Maybe you should have your own on the record.
Thank you. They deserve it, they deserve it. Yep.
All right, fellas, let's go, let's go take a picture outside. Say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to come out and join you guys.
We're going to go join you.
Nice job, guys. Nice job, nice job, fellas.
The big buck.
I just caught myself. I just caught myself. I apologize.
Oh, that's funny.
Okay. Back in session? Okay. First agenda item is signing of the warrant.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we approve that.
I'll second that.
And I would make that unanimous. Next is the approval of the January 28, 2019 minutes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
And I would make that unanimous as well. Next agenda item is invitation to speak. Is anybody here for invitation to speak? Okay, not seeing anybody.
Oh, there isn't an individual.
Come right up.
Oh, no, I was pointing him out. I didn't think they saw him.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
It's our first scheduled appointment.
Oh, all right. Yeah, it's not a...
Not an invitation.
Not an invitation to speak.
That's all right, you're fine.
Next agenda item is public hearings. There are no public hearings this evening. Next agenda item is scheduled appointments. First one is Richard's Roadhouse New Automatic Amusement License.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Thank you for your service. I'm ready to accept my reward, my award right now.
You used them all up.
And I have 10 minutes left for photos by the stairs, if anybody...
Go right ahead.
Boy, what a hard act to follow. Coin-operated amusements, want to have a little fun.
So according to your application, you're looking to add two pool tables and three, one basketball game, one pinball game, and I guess must be one golf game, one Golden Tee?
Correct.
Okay. We got your certification of insurance, not a problem. And apartment head review. Buildings and bathrooms are accessible from the building commissioner, town planner, okay, no change in actual use. Tax collection, no outstanding lanes. Town treasurer, outstanding lanes, none. Fire chief, this is the only comment that I had. If expecting a crowd of 100 or more must have a certified crowd manager in attendance, and Rick, has that been addressed? I mean, is that in there?
Yeah.
That's a standing.
That's a regulation.
Okay, I just wanted to comment on that. Police chief, no concerns, and border health has no problems as well. So, all department heads have signed off and agrees for your application.
Mr. Chairman, we have a, you know, a business within our community who's not looking to set up a casino, but looking to get automatic amusement in some pool and vending machines. I'd make a motion that we approve this request.
I'll second that.
I would make that unanimous as well.
Thank you kindly.
Well, you earned it. You didn't...
Would you like a picture?
I kind of feel left out.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Next scheduled appointment is our benefits coordinator. Kelly Capisi, good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
I'm here tonight on behalf of the Insurance Advisory Committee to see if your board would support a proposed town meeting article. That would be an adoption of Chapter thirty-two B, Section ninety and a half, which would allow the town to pay towards a surviving spouse of an employee or retiree towards their health insurance. Currently, surviving spouses are allowed to stay on our plans, but they pay a hundred percent of the premiums. So, this article would allow them to stay with the town's group plan at the rate they were covered when the retiree was living, or employee. And I'm looking for support of the board.
That, that's the most concise explanation for a two-page art, you know, document that I've heard, and I appreciate the way in which you described it. And, and really, we're talking about whether retirees who suffer from the loss of a spouse should also lose their health benefits, lose or have to pay one hundred percent, otherwise were covered prior.
Correct.
Okay.
While the retiree's living, this, the spouse is paid, you know, is paid for at the same rate as the retire, the retiree.
Right. And personally, I would be happy to help the advisory board in sponsoring this article. I don't know whether, you've decided whether it's the advisory board by itself or co-sponsored with the Board of Selectmen, but I'd be happy to get on board with that.
I would, I, this is the first time I've done this, I'm not sure of the process.
That's all right, we can actually decide that with you, and you can do that off to the side.
We can look into that, and then as the warrant's being prepared, I'm sure we'll bring that to the board's attention, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And just for the general public, Kelly, the understanding in, in your letter to us, you're estimating the annual cost to be roughly around thirty-two thousand dollars.
That is for the, that would be to get the current surviving spouses that we provide health insurance to. That would be the annual cost to get them all on board at being covered at, most of them are at fifty percent.
Okay.
Okay.
And I, and I would go on to say that having dealing, having to deal with the devastating loss of a loved one, you know, we're, we're more than a hundred million dollar a year corporation. If we, as a community, can't, you know, can't support something like that, so I would be on board with it as well.
Appreciate the support.
Yep.
Bill, did you make a motion or no?
I did not, and so, I didn't know if we wanted to have discussion or...
No, I mean, I think, I was just gonna mention the, the cost, just so people watching know what it is, Mike took care of that, but I think this is, you know, this is just simply the right thing to do.
So, Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, be happy to make a motion that we join with the Insurance Advisory Committee and support a town meeting article to adopt Mass General Law, Section thirty-two B, ninety and a half, allowing surviving spouses to continue with the town of Milford's youth health insurance and dental insurance at the same contribution rates that were paid prior to the death of an employee or retiree.
And I'll second that.
I would make that unanimous as well.
I appreciate the support.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward, Kelly.
Thank you very much.
Nice job, as always. I hear great things about you.
Next scheduled appointment is our town treasurer, Chris Pillar.
Not, not so much about Chris, but...
Nope.
Just kidding.
Sale of the real estate rear cedar of I ninety-four ninety-five.
Wow, that's bad, huh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the town was offered, received an offer to purchase two parcels, three parcels of land by Milford Stone Company. Two of the parcels fall under Mass General Law thirty-B, and to my understanding, the third parcel does not qualify to, for direct disposition because it's over the assessed value of thirty-five thousand. So, with that one, with the third parcel being over thirty-five thousand, if the board wishes, at a later date, we can set an auction date, time, and a minimum offer. We have to post that fourteen business days, and then we, the town reserves the rights to reject all bids at that point going forward. For the other two parcels, they're both one point four acres, acres of vacant land, and they were, the offer was for fourteen thousand eight hundred for one parcel and fourteen thousand seven hundred for another parcel, both at the assessed values. The town may, can either accept the offer for the two parcels, reject the offer, or we could negotiate it, and if we choose to negotiate, it should be done in executive session. If we do choose to accept the offer, the two parcels coming on the tax roll, we'd have an estimated, estimated tax revenue for each parcel would be two hundred and eighty-six dollars a year.
Sorry, could, could you say that again for my benefit?
If, so if we were to accept the offer and sell it to Milford Stone, those parcels would become taxable, and we'd get two hundred and eighty-six dollars a year for the taxes based off of the fourteen thousand seven hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred assessed values.
Well, it's a pleasure of the board. You wanna go into executive session? We have it on executive session for later on if we, if we feel that we want to, or...
Well, yeah, I think we just have to figure out, and most of the public knows, you know, if we do go into executive session, that is more of a negotiating or a real estate transaction, right? And that's what we would be going in for?
Correct.
Is that okay?
Yes. Do you have any questions, Bill? I'll turn it to you first.
No, I was curious how you wanted the disposition. There are two, sixteen dash zero two and twenty-nine dash zero four, that would provide, that would allow under Mass General Laws and for us to accept as-is or, or make changes? I didn't know what you're thinking was.
No, my stance is hasn't, you know, when I researched this, is, you know, these are vacant pieces of land. They're basically, in my opinion, and I've been there, they're unusable except for to Milford Stone, who's up there blasting and crushing rock all day long. My opinion, I would like to move forward and accept the offers.
You know, I asked Rick for some additional information. I found some of the information provided by town planner interesting but not useful, and what I was able to do is Rick was able to provide more information, and so here's my thinking. Number one, if we, if there's landlocked property that the town owns, and generally comes to acquire that, that type of property when it's very difficult to find out who the owner is oftentimes. We move on tax title, we serve the courts, and we look to disposition that land. It's very easy to make a general comment that says, hey, look, we want landlocked parcels or parcels that otherwise might not be useful other than to a butters, to get them back on the tax rolls. The town shouldn't be in the business of real estate baron, it should disposition that property. So, that's where I come from. I want town land that's owned to be back on the tax rolls to the extent possible if we can't find any useful purpose for that. With that said, twenty-nine dash zero four has, is one of the two properties we're talking about. It has frontage, I'm sorry, it has no frontage, it borders Interstate four ninety-five.
Correct, yes.
But has other abutters, and that list was given to us this evening. So, here's the challenge that I have. We have one abutter who is interested in buying the property, and through a process, submitted a, a, a offer, but we have other interested parties, or we may have other interested properties. And I use this example, Mr. Chairman. If you and Selectmen Kincaid were neighbors, and Will had submitted a parcel on a piece of landlocked property that abutted you and Will, through no, no process other than this meeting, we would be accepting Mr. Kincaid's offer and not talking to you about it at all. And so, what I'm a little bit uncomfortable with is going forward while there are other abutters, and the other, the other pretense to the, to the discussion is, I don't know where the value of assessed value came from. If somebody approached you as a developer and said, hey, I'd like to make you an offer, say, hey, I'm here to listen, but I don't know where the assessed value came from. I think it's an arbitrary figure. Its value could be determined in other ways. So, for the landlocked property that falls within Mass General Laws allowing this board to take a reasonable offer?
Which is sixteen dash zero dash two.
Which is sixteen zero dash two and twenty-nine dash zero dash four. Rick, check me on that. Twenty-nine zero dash four, sixteen zero, that's the only two that, that fall within those parameters.
Yes, that's correct.
What I'd like to do is, and what I'm gonna recommend to the board is that, number one, we find out all the interested parties. And number two, we look into negotiations and possible contact with those interested parties. We don't have to go out to bid, the parcels are small, it's likely, very, very likely, not only likely, you know, reasonable, reasonable that only the abutters are gonna be interested in this land. The state of Massachusetts, where it's landlocked against four ninety-five, is not gonna come to us and look for that land, but, but there are other, maybe other interested parties. So, I'd like to provide notification to those that says, we've, we've received an offer, we're about to begin negotiations, is there any interest in this property from the other abutters?
Putting it on the next meeting, Rick, which would be the twenty-fifth, would that allow you enough time?
Sure, I could speak with our council tomorrow and send out, there aren't that many.
And this is, this is not a motion, but the other thing I'd like to add, there aren't that many, but the other thing I'd like to add is that we go into negotiations following that process of notifying other abutters, because there could be somebody else that pops up that has interest.
You comfortable with that, putting it on the next agenda?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, yeah, that's fine. I think, you know, when I look at the, the list of abutters, I mean, like Rick said, there's really very few individuals or, or trusts that need to be, that need to be contacted. I don't think anyone would ever fault us for just letting abutters know that, you know, this process is taking place, so I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
And, and I understand the concern for the abutters, but I want the general public to also know that this land has no use, hasn't been used, and has no use except for Milford Stoneworks. But with that, Rick, can we move this to, put it on the agenda for the twenty-fifth?
Absolutely.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I wanna check that, because there are other abutters, there may be interest from other abutters. I don't know who has a use for it. The other thing is just a procedural issue. The notes on the check indicate that it's an amount of money in offer of three lots. So, I think there's procedurally some things to work out with Route eighty-five Realty Corporation, because it's not three, it's two. Other, the disposition of other properties follows a different path set forth by Mass General Law.
That's correct. He made an offer on the three properties, but the board's purview would only be two tonight.
If I'm not mistaken, he was informed that the larger parcel, the thirty-nine six...
I have, I don't know that answer, I haven't had any contact with him, I'm not sure if Attorney Body has, but I can check on that tomorrow for you.
Okay.
So, we make a motion, and I wanna again say that, you know, landlocked properties that the town has no interest in should be put back on the tax roll. We'll look for the most efficient way to do that through negotiations and through notification of other abutters.
Absolutely. Okay.
Good with it? Yeah.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, next agenda item is old business. Under old business, Town Administrator, Police Chief, Selection Committee.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, maybe I have a brief town administrative report. That's all right.
Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped over, my fault.
No problem, that's okay.
I got so many notes on my page.
I know, there's a lot tonight. On Saturday, just three items, on National Grid on Saturday, February ninth. I just want the board to know that the National Grid did change the transformer that provides the electrical service to Town Hall. I wanna thank Wiring Inspector Mike Mancini and Facilities Director Carlos Benjamin for their assistance working with the National Grid on, with National Grid on this project. Went very smoothly, you know, there were no issues. All neighbors were notified, they were provided parking should they need it while the work was being done. The second item is, I want to inform the board that we are pleased to have been notified by Governor Charlie Baker and Lieutenant Governor Karen, Karen Polito, that Milford was awarded a fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Massachusetts Downtown Initiative Technical Assistance Award. This is a grant in the form of a grant, it will provide up to fifteen thousand dollars worth of consultant services to assist the town with a housing, housing-focused zoning study for a defined downtown corridor targeted for redevelopment. The consultant from the Department of Housing and Community Development will assist with our downtown revitalization activities. And I do wanna point out and thank Mitra City, as you know, we have, we hired him as a consultant grant writer for us. He actually prepared and filed this grant, and so I wanna just reach out and, and let him know that we're grateful for this. And it will be a study that will be, get some information on how viable is housing in the downtown corridor that we're now trying to revitalize. And the final item I wanna point out to the board is, I was asked last meeting on industrial road and the LED lighting, on the light project, it is confirmed that a work order has been established. I don't have a definitive time, but it is gonna get done.
You knew the question that was gonna get out.
I knew, so I figured I'd cut it off if I could, but I assure you, it will be done.
No, Rick, and I, and I wanna just publicly say I appreciate everything, because I know I can haunt a hundred houses, and I, I've been on you about this since July, so...
No, no.
You said it was gonna get to one, and it is, it's just I, I'm trying to have respect for the process as much as...
Understood.
As being as impatient as I am, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
No, 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 understood, no problem. That's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to respond to that topic and thank Rick for bringing that out, that downtown, the Baker administration provided a fifteen thousand dollar grant to allow us to look at, to look into the possibility of housing on Main Street. I think it goes a long way to helping and inform town meeting members and this board and other boards what successful tactics, strategies other communities have used, and how they've helped other communities. It will help us benchmark other communities who have housing on Main Street, who are looking for walking traffic and boutique businesses, but I think it'll answer other things. I know that town meeting is sensitive to the, to the needs of parking, and it'll also help us understand to what extent any additional housing will create greater demand for parking that we have then need to respond to. And we either respond to it through grants, through data, through benchmarking, and through information that we gather from the state, or we, and proactively do that, or we reactively do it when we have complaints. I like this approach better. I'm pleased and happy that we were able to get that grant, and I'd also like to thank Mr. Ricity for helping us get that grant.
No, I think this is another, another feather in the cap to Mitch and to the downtown revitalization group. Bill, I appreciate you, you bringing that up. They deserve a lot of recognition, we had them here, like, I think you put them on the agenda, maybe the last meeting or the meeting before, I'm trying to, trying to remember, but again, they're, they're moving quickly, they're getting results quickly, and this is just another example of that. So, I just wanna say that they're doing a lot of good work and moving in the right direction.
They are. I think what's important too for the community, again, to know how serious they are about what they do, I was supposed to be at that function with the Lieutenant Governor. Something came up that afternoon at work, I called Rick and said, there's no way I can be in Topsfield tomorrow, absolutely no way. I reached out to Ronnie Pagnini, and he said, no problem, I'll be there. And it would've been very easy for Ronnie to say to me, yo, you know, it's Thursday afternoon, I gotta be there tomorrow at one o'clock. He didn't, he said, no problem, he said, I'll, I'll be there, he was there. I ran into Paul Malnati over the weekend, Paul said he had spoken to Ronnie, and what a great ceremony it was. So, the community needs to know that, you know, this is a group of people that put together a committee that are very serious about improving and working on our downtown areas. So, you know, as a, as a selectman in the community, I wanna say thank you, I wanna say, publicly say thank you for, to Ronnie for, for going up there. It was very important that somebody from the community be there when the Lieutenant Governor was giving that award away. So, thank you, thank you very much.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just to, just to fill in the final gap, is I think Mitch went also, so...
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mitch, thank you. And Rick, I wanna thank you for your generated work, getting it done over the weekend and getting Town Hall back and lit up.
Everything is back on track. We had it shut down for a little bit, but everything is fine.
At least it was a controlled shutdown, right?
It was very controlled, very controlled, yes.
Okay, and now we go to old business, and the Town Administrator, Police Chief, Selection Committee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, basically, most of the positions, as you know... Yes, Mr. Chairman, basically, most of the positions, as you know, are required by Article thirty-two. Just to recap, the Chairman Board of Selectmen, Michael K. Walts. Representative from the Milford Police Association is James Heron. There was a revote on that for a particular reason. Personnel Board Chairman Scott Harrison, Police Chief Thomas J. Loughlin, Finance Committee Chairman Chris Moran. All have accepted their appointment to the committee. And then, as you know, Town Moderator Mike Nowfree appointed a town meeting member, which is Richard Heller. And then the two other members at large, Donato F. Nero and Dino Di Bartolome. The board now is left with their four appointments. One, it should, has to be a town meeting member. The other are three residents of Milford, not town officials or town meeting members. In your packet, I added tonight a, just a listing of those who have accepted and those who have submitted letters of interest for your four appointments. And I look for a motion or motions, if need be, to fulfill that committee and get that committee ongoing.
And our appointments, Rick, we have one as a selectman, we have one that we're allowed to pick a town meeting member, and then three residents of the town.
Yep.
Just for the general public, non-town officials or town meeting members.
Correct, can be neither, correct.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we said at the last meeting that we'd make great deference, if possible, to the people who originally applied, originally submitted their letters. As it turns out, through luck of the draw, the original members all fit those categories. Right? So we look at the original David Brush, Edward Bertorelli, Christopher Fritz, and Jody Nostiglia. They all fit that category with Edward Bertorelli being the town meeting member appointed, or I shouldn't say appointed, originally submitting his name. So with that, I'd like to make those appointments from the original list, identifying Edward Bertorelli as the, as the town meeting member. Why don't we stop there, just make that as a motion. Appoint, town meeting member appointed by selectman Edward Bertorelli.
I'll second that.
I would make that unanimous.
Okay. And then on the balance of the three from the original list that we received of interested parties when we posted the notice some months ago, David Brush, Christopher Fritz, and Jody Nostiglia.
I'll second that.
And I would make that unanimous as well.
Okay, got that, Rick?
Yes.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I can, I just want to, you know, I did a little, you know, just, just from their resumes and everything, I think it's important for, for folks to know that, among other things professionally, Edward Bertorelli's been a town meeting member for over thirty years.
Thirty-two, I think.
As for the three folks, according to their resumes, David Brush is a longtime EMC employee. Christopher Fritz, who obviously a resident of Milford, is a Wellesley police officer for at least the last twenty years or so. And Jody Nostiglia is a HR manager at MIT. And I'm probably not even doing her justice in the, in describing what she does, but extensive HR background. And I only know them from their, from their resumes, but I think we have a very diverse, very impressive committee to move forward. I think with that, I think also we probably want to start maybe taking a couple of weeks to, you know, and, you know, I'll look for the advice and counsel of my colleagues. But I think also that, you know, according to the bylaw, the Police Chief Search Committee may have obviously very important work to do, but a lot of work to do. Rick, I don't know if you, if you know this offhand or can maybe, you know, just do the research it takes. I believe the last Police Chief search, you know, going back obviously eighteen years, it was about, I think, maybe three or four weeks short of a year process.
Yeah, I don't know if it was that long, but yes, it was a long process.
It was a long process. And I think, or at least one, from the, from the point where I think the new chief started.
Okay.
You know, you figure the, the people you're attracting, both locally and nationally, you know, this isn't a job that necessarily somebody could possibly give two weeks' notice and then start their job. This is at executive level. So I think, you know, if I was on this board, I would hope that, you know, I know according, very clearly according to the bylaw, what my duties and responsibilities are. But what I don't know is maybe what the selectmen are looking to add. Not that, not that there's, and that's where, you know, there is a representative obviously from this board. And not as direction, as, or I should say, not as a directive to the committee, but just saying, okay, we're going to send, they have the huge job of doing interviews, background checks, follow-ups, visits. I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of work for them to do to make this very important decision. But then they know, according to the bylaw, that they have to send us a minimum of three, a maximum of five of the finalists for us to decide. So regardless of what comes out of their deliberating for months and months, is the fact that they probably should at least know maybe what things or qualities we're looking for. And then they can do with that what they want. It's an independent committee. But I'm just thinking that, you know, if we have any direction, we may want to take a couple of weeks to, to provide that. You know, when you look at the bylaw, it talks about, you know, all the minimum requirements, but not limited to.
It talks about, you know, just for the, for the sake of the folks at home.
Just so you know, Rick and I talked about that today too. And we planned, would we say two weeks, Rick? We're going to try and put the first meeting together?
If, if we can do it in two weeks, if the board wants to come back on the twenty-fifth and provide insight, then maybe we go three weeks.
Well, I also, I also want, almost to the complete contrary to your, to your comment, Mike, and I almost hope this committee knows that they have a lot of work to do. They have to do their due diligence. They're obviously making a huge decision and based on the number of applicants we got, we didn't get a thousand applicants to do this. People know it's going to be a lot of work, a lot of time. And that's why, you know, what was it, fourteen, fifteen folks?
A lot of time away from family.
Exactly, it's, it's a lot of work.
Yeah.
And I think the one thing they need to know, or at least from, at least from my point of view is, this is nothing that you have to rush for. You're going to get started, you have a long road ahead.
I didn't mean we're going to rush, I mean, we need to get started because we know it's a long road.
Absolutely. No, no, the sooner you start, the sooner this, you know, the sooner it begins. But I just, I think that because of all the other distractions and things that, that had taken place, where obviously this group is already off to a much later start than, than maybe they could have been.
Okay.
Or how the prior search went. So I just say that publicly, mostly for, for these folks, is that nothing changes. We still have a very strong, very clear bylaw that we have to follow, that they have to follow. So I think it's just very important for them to know that, you know, we're not going to have a new permanent chief by July first. There will be an interim chief. I mean, I, I don't see how it works from, you know, pretty much March. It's February vacation, so by the time you get, and get the fourteen people, the twelve people together, you might be looking at, at March.
Well, it's a national search too.
Exactly, that's exactly where I was going next, that by the bylaw, it's, yeah, you can address it locally, but this is a national search. And, you know, that's why the last time we had people from New York and California and everywhere else and everywhere in between. So I just think it's very important that they're not going to be under any scrutiny or stress from, from this member that guys that, you know, tick tock because it doesn't change the amount of work that they have and the time that it's going to take to get this done and get it done right. Because all the background, everything that they, that this committee has to do based on the bylaw, then, whenever that time is, then it comes to this board. And that decision isn't made by a five-minute interview. I mean, that's why this, you know, I just want them to, to feel at ease, at least from this board, that
Yeah, yeah.
You start, you start in March. I mean, it's hard for some of us to arrange our schedules when something gets thrown off for the three of us to be able to be at a, at a special meeting. Now, we've got twelve people that have to.
Well, that's why I thought it'd be important to get everybody together as soon as possible to make those points.
Yeah.
You know, we're off to a late start here, so don't, you know, and we've got a lot of work to do. So don't look at your calendar and say, how am I going to get this all done by June thirtieth?
Absolutely. No, no, and I guess, and I think that's why it's, it's good for us to have a public discussion like this about it. I'm glad you and Rick were already talking about it as role of chair and deal with the town administrator. That's exactly, I'm glad to hear that you were having those conversations. But I think just for the, you know, for the, the greater knowledge base out here, for, you know, for our constituents to know that, you know, this, this is going to be a decision that, that will be made after all of this work and due diligence is done. And it's, it's a lot of work. And I want to publicly acknowledge the twelve members who have volunteered to serve because it's, it's a lot of work.
Right. And you make a valid point because after we go through this process, then it comes to us.
Yeah. And then we have to look at everything that they submit to us. Because according to the bylaw, they submit three to five names unranked. So they're not even telling us who their maybe number one is, if there is one, or, or this. And then we have to figure that out
Right.
amongst the three of us.
Yeah, if I remember.
And move forward.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No.
If I remember correctly, the last search process, they went to communities. They visited communities, so.
Yeah, I remember Dino, I think, went to New York City on one of them.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know who went where, but I know that part of that process was to go talk with business owners, talk with the community members and get a feel for the public safety.
Colleagues, subordinates.
Colleagues, subordinates, yeah.
You know, it's a lot of work.
So, okay. No, that's good feedback. And, you know, there was one particular thing that you mentioned that I think is, you know, possibly important for the committee, where it's not directive. But when you talked about qualities that the board is looking for in terms of a new chief, you know, I think that is, you know, a wise thing for us to put together. And it could be in the form of job description. And job descriptions frequently mention qualities of candidates.
Qualities and responsibilities.
Yeah. So, you know, I think that's something we should be working on. And I think that's something we should be working on sooner rather than later. Because, you know, even going to the, the selectman's representative, what's the board looking for? Without that, you would have a hard time saying what, you know, representing what the, the three members are looking for. So, yeah, I think that's a great idea. And it doesn't mean they're bound to any one of those qualities or all of the qualities together. And we're, we'd probably come up with the same list, but I think it's good that we're thoughtful enough to present that and provide it as, as a guidance document in addition to the rest of the, you know, town meeting bylaw.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
So if there's a meeting time that we can get together or a process you'd like to recommend, we can submit them to Rick?
I am not.
We can submit documents to Rick? Want us just to submit our thoughts to that and
I mean.
What are you thinking?
Well, I mean, I would like the three of us to be together. I think we actually, the three of us actually get a lot done when we sit together for thirty minutes to an hour. We've been actually very effective of that over the last few years. I mean, so I, I know it's going to be another, another meeting, another night out. I'm not here next week, so it'd have to be the week after. But I was hoping maybe one night, three of us. And I don't know, Rick, can we, you may know, or maybe we can check with our town council to see if, if that's something, do we meet an executive over? Either it leans towards a public outcome, but we're still talking about possible, so I'm not sure. But I guess you can figure that out and then tell us whether it's, I don't, I don't care if it's open or
Yeah.
It doesn't, doesn't matter to, to me.
Doesn't make any difference whether we go later on this week or we go the following week after school vacation because we got a selectman's meeting on the twenty-eighth anyway.
Oh, okay.
So it's another, be another second meeting. So it doesn't make any difference, so if you want.
We fit it into that agenda.
Yeah, twenty-fifth, I think it is.
You already scheduled me, since it's the week after vacation. That work?
Yeah, right now, I mean, it's, it's a light meeting right now. I mean, it could change, but right now it's all.
And if it has to go into exec, I'll put it in exec.
I will check with Charles, my thought.
Yeah, let's do it then, we'll do it that night.
May not be, but let me check with Charles.
I would think it's open, but I just want to.
That'd be my thought.
I want to talk about it publicly and then find out, hey, why are those guys behind closed doors? You know what I mean?
I'd like to, if there's any way possible to have that meeting in open session.
I'll put that on for the twenty-fifth.
Okay. Great. Great, thank you.
Okay, next item in old business is the update on the Milford Water Company. And I've been asked to read the letter.
Oh, hopefully not its entirety, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I was asked to read it in its entirety.
Who asked you that?
I'll be fast. On Friday, January twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, the town of Milford took another step forward in its efforts to purchase the Milford Water Company. The town filed expert testimony with the Department of Public Utilities in a proceeding that will determine the compensation to be paid by the town to acquire the Milford Water Company. As we outlined in an update in May seventh, two thousand and eighteen, the filing follows unsuccessfully negotiations where the town and the Milford Water Company were not able to agree to terms that would have protected the town in connection with the stock purchase of the Milford Water Company. Applying calculations and formulas used regularly in utility market analysis, the town's expert, John Reed of Concentric Energy Advisors valued the Milford Water Company at approximately forty million dollars. Although this evaluation is less, I'm sorry, although this valuation is less than the sixty-three million purchase price previously approved at town meeting, we anticipated this price difference considering that the expert recommendation is being submitted as part of the formal valuation proceeding. Prior to entering this regulatory proceeding, the town had determined there was real value in immediately owning and controlling our water supply and avoiding the cost of drawn-out process. The determination was based on our ability to reach an agreement that ensured appropriate financial safeguards, including the scope of the representation and warranties to be made by the Milford Water Company. The escrow amount to be withheld from the purchase proceeds for a period of time to address any unknown or undisclosed liabilities and other customary terms in a stock purchase acquisition. When an agreement could not be reached, the board purchased the regulatory process, pursued the regulatory process with the same goal of acquiring the Milford Water Company. This new path has allowed for a thorough and expert analysis of the Milford Water Company under different terms. The regulatory process will allow the town to acquire only the assets of the Milford Water Company without the Milford Water Company's debt and liabilities for a price determined by the Department of Public Utilities. If the town is not satisfied with the Department of Public Utilities determination, it can forego the purchase. Conversely, the Milford Water Company is bound by the Department of Public Utilities valuation determination once finally accepted by the Supreme Judicial Court. The Milford Water Company also filed testimony with the Department of Public Utilities in which it values the one hundred and thirty-six-year-old utility at a hundred and fifty-eight million dollars. Hearings to be held at the Department of Public Utilities on the matter are scheduled for May two thousand and nineteen with a decision expected by the end of the year. A link to the town's and the Milford Water Company's full filing can be found on the town of Milford's website. Throughout the entire process to acquire the Milford Water Company, this board is, has prioritized protecting the town's finances while there is an enormous difference between the town's valuation and the Milford Water Company's valuation filed at the Department of Public Utilities. We have confidence in our expert's evaluation and town's position as the regulatory proceedings commence. And above all else, we remain steadfast in our belief that the purchase and ultimate control of the town's water supply is in Milford's best interest. Although the playing field has changed, our goal remains the same, to ensure the town owns and operates a community water system that is transparent, responsive, responsive and accountable to all the residents. Sincerely, the Milford Board of Selectmen. Open it to you, Bill.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is well-written and pretty much takes us to our previous communication with town meeting members and the, and the general community on our posted information. Highlights from this that I've underlined are that when we originally went to town meeting with the sixty-three million dollar stock acquisition program, we had to proceed with caution because in stock acquisition and buying the whole company, you have unknown liabilities for which due diligence has a greater demand. When we had a mediated settlement of sixty-three million dollars, we took that to the town meeting. And through no fault of our own, the Milford Water Company sought fit to back out of the letter of intent. So they have a stated position at sixty-three million. I mean, while I represent, or while I respect that they are representing a hundred and fifty-eight million dollar acquisition price, I think the valuation at forty million makes some sense. And it even makes more sense that the acquisition go on to the DPU process to acquire only the assets. An asset-based purchase is much more favorable to the community. It's how the DPU sets acquisition for water companies. And frankly, I couldn't be happier that it's an asset-based purchase and not a stock purchase. And I think, you know, you said it well when you said that, you know, we remain when you said that, um, um, you know, we remain committed to purchase the, and ultimately control the town's water supply and that, um, we otherwise intend to operate a water system that's transparent, responsive, and accountable to all the residents. I think a town meeting agreed with our premise that that had not been the case in the past. It's not the case now. The town ultimately should be responsible for its water system. This is just another part of the process. And, uh, Rick, the attorneys and those involved, uh, did an excellent job in providing an update, um, so that we want to period, we know we want to periodically communicate with our citizens. This is something that'll be put on the town's website, um, so that they can read it. And we'll provide it to the, um, to the media as well. But I couldn't be happier in the process, the way this is going because asset-based versus stock purchase is just more favorable to the community.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, no, I, I echo, I echo my colleague's sentiment, um, sentiments. Um, I'll add that, you know, I feel like we've been living and breathing the, the Milford Water Company and the potential purchase now, well, certainly for the, for the four years that I've been on this board, um, and obviously some folks even prior to. Um, but I think it also speaks to the importance of it, quite honestly, and that it's not necessarily about today and the, the three members here that have been working diligently on this issue, um, month after month. But, but also, you know, or in addition to that, it's, it's our kids, it's our grandkids. This is all about the future and moving forward in the next hundred years. It, it's not, you know, we can talk about how we got here in the last 20 years, but really, this is all about looking towards, looking out the windshield and not the rearview because this is, this has long, long-ranging impacts and, and mostly positive as far as I'm concerned. I think that, uh, we've said this at town meeting, we've said it at a number of meetings here. I think, you know, people need to be responsible and, and have ownership of their water supply. Um, you know, it's nothing that the town of Milford had a, had to worry about for, for many, many years. But I, I, I think most people now have come to the, have come to the fact and, and agree, um, that we need, the town needs to be responsible for its own water supply. I mean, there's nothing more, there's nothing more important than water.
Right.
Um, and, and, you know, that's a overly simplistic approach, but I think we see what happens when people aren't personally, have a personal stake in what comes out of their faucet, what they're bathing their children in, what they're drinking. Um, so I couldn't be happier. Um, it's been, it's been a lot of work. Uh, I know, again, for Rick, for our legal team, for all the experts we've had, I want to publicly acknowledge town meeting for standing behind us and behind, uh, this whole, this whole endeavor. Um, they always ask tough questions. They, they, they scrutinize the numbers as they should. But in the end, I mean, even us, we've all had different opinions and we're all signing letters and been on the same page now for the last few years about, wow, you know, we, this is gonna happen. And, and so I also want to credit you two for, for, for staying in this for as long as we have because I don't think people would have necessarily thought poorly of us if we said, you know what, this, we gotta walk away from it. Where, you know, they come back with a $158 million number. Obviously, we're on a very different page than that. Um, but we have to rely on the people that we've sought out for advice and for counsel. So I think, again, I say it clearly, we're moving in the right direction. This is the right thing to do. But I did want to acknowledge town meeting and, and the team that we have in place because, um, you know, this has to happen. And we have three, uh, water commissioners in waiting. Um, and I will feel, uh, very much more at ease when they're at the helm in a, in a, in maybe a year or two.
Yeah. And, and I think a very interesting point that has to be made so that the general public understands it is that one of the problems with the stock purchase was they couldn't identify all the owners of the stock. Um, I know for a fact, Rick and I had a conversation. We had a gentleman from Canada reach out to us one day and said, I think I got stock in the Milford Water Company. So that's how their records are. So there's so many people out there that what we're fearful of, and the general public should know this, is that we do a stock purchase and now all of a sudden somebody surfaces because we didn't get all the names of the stock that, so we could buy the stock. That's a, that's a serious problem. And, and, uh, Will, you make a valid point about the sewer, about the water commissioners. I use the same example as the sewer commissioners. If you have a problem at your home and you don't feel you're getting a response, well, I'm sure that one of us would pick up the phone and call one of the commissioners and say, I'm gonna meet you there in an hour.
Mm-hmm.
Where, I, and I say this, and I don't mean any disrespect, but I know it to be factual. You call the Milford Water Company a quarter or five on a Friday night, you got brown water, you got brown water till Monday unless you've got a real serious problem with a, with a, with a commission, you know. And I understand they're, they're gonna be elected on their own, but still, you know, the board of selectmen is the board of selectmen. And if somebody was to call me and say, in Highland Street, just using an example that I either have no water pressure, I have brown water, I have foul odor or whatever, and I felt they weren't getting any response, I'd be the first one on the phone to one of the commissioners. And so that's, that's, that's only a small example of the benefit of owning the water company. There's many, many, many benefits, uh, to, to purchasing the water company. But I also think that it's important that, you know, we went to town meeting, town meeting approved the $63 million. And it actually, the value of it came in under the $63 million. And they came back with their 158. And, and we didn't cower. We said, okay, we're gonna go this direction. We're gonna turn it over to the Department of Public Utilities and we're gonna handle it through that way. Um, because the three of us still have the best interests of the community at heart. And we want to do the right thing for the taxpayers. The three of us are taxpayers in this community. We want to do the right thing for the taxpayers of this community. And I just want everybody to know that we are. We are doing everything we can. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, Rick, next one is town administrators' budget packet.
Yeah, the, uh, the finance director did put out the budget packet. Uh, the last meeting, I believe, we had his proposed timeline, just to be a little more specific on it. Um, he's looking to distribute the budget packet on Thursday of this week that will give, uh, department heads, boards, committees, et cetera, until March 15th to basically prepare and submit their budgets, have them reviewed by their FinCom, either subcommittee or full finance committee, depending on the situation. Uh, and then the expectation from there is that by April 15th, um, the total budget will be projected, submitted for final approval, to be included in Article Four at the May 20, um, annual time meeting, town meeting. Uh, and in May also, we will have our usual financial team meeting, uh, to review the budgets, uh, prior again to town meeting. So that's pretty much the timeline that's being proposed by, uh, by Zach, uh, as finance director. And, uh, right now, we are on target to meet that timeline. And what he's asking, I believe, from this board tonight is just your approval, uh, on his directive that's included in your packet.
Yeah, so I, I understand the directive. What I'm, if I were a department head, I'm, I'm still confused by the process. And let me be clear. Our requests should be forwarded to the town administrator and finance director for review and input. What I'm not clear there is what date. If the date is March 15th, then we'll, they'll have already been reviewed by finance committee and subcommittee. And frankly, that was one of the things I was trying to avoid. And I know that Zach had been trying to avoid it as well. That we start a process and we start a ball moving forward, um, that had not been vetted by you and finance director.
Okay. Yeah, well, we will be vetting those once we have them. I think also, part of the budget will be, are they looking for additional personnel? So we'll be reviewing those also.
I'm with you, but if I get it in.
Before subcommittee and before finance committee.
But if I get it in on March 15th, how much time are you gonna have to do that?
Uh, we'll have another month to do that, I believe. He's looking for April 15th.
So that's prior to finance committee?
Yes. And then we want to come to this board also.
All right. So here's what I'd ask, Rick, as a matter of process.
Yeah.
I'd ask that the FinCom not review any requests that have not been vetted, reviewed, and have input provided by you and the FinCom.
Okay.
What often happens in town.
I'm sorry, me and Zach or?
You and Zach.
Okay, yeah.
What did I say?
Uh, you said FinCom, I just wanted to make sure.
I'm sorry, you and Zach.
No, that's okay. I think that's, yeah.
What often happens is the ball gets further down the road when somebody makes a request for capital items or somebody makes a request for, you know, additional personnel and it doesn't get the superficial scrutiny prior to going to FinCom. I don't want to put it in their process before we've gone.
Understood. And that's the intent. I agree.
All right.
Yes, we agree on that.
All right.
Does that see our executive committee, Rick?
Uh, the, uh, well, the, the, the financial team meeting is usually in May, but before that, we will be in front of you, or Zach will be and I will be.
Okay.
You may have some questions.
Bundling it.
Yes. And, and you may pick something out of a certain budget and say, why? If maybe a personnel addition. I don't, I'm just speculating, but, yeah, right. And then obviously, we'll have our financial team meeting, um, prior to town meeting to discuss articles and which one of which will include budget in Article Four.
The financial team is, again.
Yeah.
Zach, you, chairman of the board of selectmen.
Yeah, yeah.
And chairman of the finance committee.
Yeah, I'm Paul Abadanza, treasurer.
Right.
And they usually join. And sometimes town council will be involved, depending on the nature of cer- certain articles.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and in the past, people have put in requests for personnel and gotten it immediately to the FinCom, only to find out that their finance assumptions for fully burdened salary and benefits is not anywhere close to what they were anticipating. And so it starts a process of review and garnering support before we know, number one, is the math right? Number two, do we agree with the need?
Right.
Right? So that's what we're trying to head off.
Mm-hmm.
Because, yeah, and the other thing is, if we could avoid putting together a draft set of articles until it's been vetted.
Okay.
That's another thing. Because as soon as see, people see it in lights on the draft articles at town meeting, they think they're on.
Right, they assume it's, it's good.
It's good to go and it's not.
Right.
And I know you can ima, I can imagine what you go through for reviews of budgets and personnel requests and all of that. Same thing where I work, same thing, it should be the same thing here.
Okay.
You're good, Will?
Yeah.
Okay.
Next agenda item is new business, Milford Cultural Council appointments. And Rick, if I'm not mistaken, we have.
Uh, we have, I think, five new ones, yeah.
Five new ones and we're allowed to have up to 22?
Yes, that's correct. It is currently 14. So obviously.
Go to 19.
Correct.
And Rick, I know you provided those names, but you also provided them, uh, um, I, I see it as, uh, the people who have responded that are interested in joining the cultural council are Thomas Riley.
Yeah.
Brian Cole.
Thank you.
Um, Molly Oger.
Yeah.
Jerry Edens and Michael Visconti.
Correct. Those would be the five that are looking to be appointed.
I don't, and I, you had indicated, I know we had, this is a little bit of a problem where the chairman had resigned and there was no great interest in, um, somebody being, uh, in being a chairman. And so, um, my understanding is through, uh, and if we look at the application, Jerry Edens had offered to be, uh, chair. That's up to that board, but it sounds like.
To the chairman.
That problem could be solved.
Right.
Yes, Jerry did, did put that in her cover letter.
And, you know, and, um, there are some of the other members I know and have met and they're, you know, but I happen to know Jerry being highly organized. I have no worries about that. And so what I would make a motion for is that we appoint Thomas Riley, Brian Cole, Molly Alger, Jerry Edens, and Michael Visconti to the, uh, Milford Cultural Commission.
I'll second that.
I would make that unanimous as well. And that'll bring that committee to 19, Rick.
I believe so, yes. Yep. Again, you can go to 22.
Okay, next under new business is the town administrators' report on the appointment to the senior center program coordinator.
Um, yes. Um, the, uh, position of program coordinator for the senior center is now vacant. Um, the, was advertised, uh, on the town and senior center websites. Um, it was vetted, uh, nine applications, I'm sorry, were received. Um, the HR director, Maureen Giffen, and Sue Clark, senior center director, selected four candidates to be interviewed. They did an initial phone screen and then three candidates were chosen then to be interviewed in person. Um, after the interview process, uh, Sue Clark, with the support of, uh, Maureen Giffen, uh, is recommending Denise Rizzoli for the position. Uh, Ms. Rizzoli has worked as the Meals on Wheels site manager for nine years in Milford. Obviously, she's very familiar with the center and many visitors who come. Maybe she believes this would be a smooth transition, uh, if the board were to approve of this recommendation. Um, we are requesting she be placed at Level Two Step One under Article Two with a starting hourly rate of $21.69. Uh, we haven't confirmed a start date, but, uh, as early as hopefully February 25th with the board's approval. Um, and that's all I have on that.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, um, I'd just like to thank Sue and Maureen for this, um, for the, for the process that they're presenting. Um, I've gotten a lot of feedback, Rick.
Yep.
About, uh, how positive it is with Maureen being here and on-site and us having an HR professional here. So I hope you're, I hope you're hearing the, the same.
Very pleased. I'm seeing it.
Good.
Not only, uh, hearing it, but, uh, she has touched every office, both in town hall and elected.
Yep.
And, and other offices.
Every day I'm here, she's up and down the corridor all, all the time.
She's worked with the library, she's worked with the senior center, the youth center, the highway department, uh, et cetera. So.
No, and that's what we.
Very pleased so far.
That's what we figured. So I'm glad, I'm glad everything's working out and that I know you're working closely with her. Um, and I, and I want to thank Sue Clark and Denise Rizzoli. Um, I could talk at length about, she's been down there for, like Sue said, for nine, nine years Meals on Wheels. Honestly, one of the nicest people and everyone knows her there. So never mind a smooth transition. I don't think she's gonna have a transition at all. So.
Probably not.
I think we've kind of all looked at her as being an extension of the senior center already. So if I can, I'd like to make the motion to appoint Denise Rizzoli.
I was gonna say, it sounds like you have the basis for a motion.
Yeah, why not?
Yeah.
It's a great hire.
I'm not gonna repeat the things that Will said, the things that I had in mind. So I'd like to second that motion.
Okay.
I would make that unanimous as well.
Great candidate, hired from within with Meals on Wheels experience for a number of years.
Yeah.
Looks perfect.
And I was gonna say, you could say it's gonna be a great addition to the Milford Senior Center, but she's already there.
Yep.
Okay, and the last thing under new business is Bright Insurance looking to, this is from Police Chief Thomas Olafland. Mr. Steve Ellis from the Bright Insurance has requested that a 15-minute parking restriction be placed on two spaces in front of Bright Insurance on Congress Street, just south of the crosswalk in the HP space. I believe that this is a reasonable measure to allow customers going to Bright Insurance to park for a short duration of time to conduct their business and then leave so that the space can be utilized by another customer. This approach has been utilized in Milford at those businesses that have a high volume of patrons who are present for a limited duration of time. In essence, Bill's Pizza, Charlie's Mini, Mini March, Central Street Barbershop. Sincerely yours, Thomas J. Olafland.
Yeah, this is a process that we've used in the past. Um, and when public safety gets together with the business owner, in this case, those parking spaces are, are unique to that business. And so I, I would, uh, vote to approve the, or make a motion to approve the recommendation and request by Mr. Ellis.
I'll second that.
Before I make it unanimous, I think that's very important for people to understand is that between the post office, the church, and Calbright Insurance, on both sides of the street, parking is very, very, very difficult. And with that being said, I would make it unanimous as well.
Next agenda item is correspondence. Does anybody have any correspondence?
I do not.
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And we do have an executive session tonight. We actually had two. We're not gonna use the second one. The main one is Attorney Patrick Holland referenced the Vernon Grove Collective Bargaining, uh, Contract. And with that, it will require a roll call vote.
Yeah, we also reserve the right to talk about, um, discussion strategy on real estate.
Yes.
If, if we need to, but just in case.
Town treasurer referencing discussion and strategy to sell real estate located at the rear Cedar Street in I-495.
Uh, aye?
Aye.
Aye. And we will not be returning to open session. So with that, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Head motion to adjourn regular session, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
And I would make that unanimous to leave regular session.